Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, April 27th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Please join me with the flag of allegiance. To the flag.
To the flag, United States of America, in the republic for which it stands. For God, indivisible, everything and justice.
Thank you. So with a motion to approve the agenda, we would like to add an item as item number six point. Six point zero. Six point zero, that'll be the easiest to talk about urban suburban. So if whoever's making the motion to approve the agenda can include that.
Sir, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the included item of six point zero to discuss the urban suburban program.
Hey, first, second, Mr. Kincaid. And for those in attendance, we have two people, two more members, Gary and Kate are online joining us. So all in favor of approval of the agenda? Okay, that's five. Mike Maselli and Dave Gubardo are going to be joining us in the near future. So we're seeing them. Okay, privilege of the floor. We have no privilege of the floor. Onto our next item, consent agenda. I have a motion to approve consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Kincaid, second. The stone. All in favor? Five oh. Thank you, everyone. Moving through this. Four reports and board communications are, my, my report is, I don't know where my phone is. I, I, I don't have a lot. Been in communication with Dr. Kissel, who will be talking about the reopening update and looking forward to hearing that. And we will get into many other things, so I don't have much to report. Mr. Kincaid.
Yeah, just real quick, I did, I did join the COVID response team meeting on April 14th, as I reported on the 13th at our last meeting. Talked about establishing a reopening task force in preparation to move to five days of in-person instruction in September. A lot of discussion around that and also discussion around refining the current K-5 approach. And I know that the K-5 ad hoc committee will be reconvening and be a big part of that work. And we're really looking forward to some of those discussions and decisions and recommendations that come out of the work there. And thank you to all the teachers and administrators that are part of that K-5 ad hoc group. They've done an excellent job of really coming together, collaborating and making some great recommendations moving forward. With that, it was great to hear reports from our secondary level. And the question was if we were able to open at the secondary level. Transportation indicated that they're ready. High school, middle school administration said that they're ready for a quick turnaround if needed. Food service said that they can accommodate and facilities were able to accommodate quickly as well. And I know we'll be talking more about that later on tonight, so I won't dig any deeper into that. And additionally to that, we talked a little bit about some community events, including graduations, end of the year celebrations. And how do we manage those events with some of the guidelines that we're currently facing? But knowing at the same time that those guidelines can change very quickly. So there's plans that are moving forward, but at the same time, we're ready to adapt and make changes. And once things become closer to final, more information will be rolled out. Additionally to that, summer camps, sport camps, robotic camps, other available programs, registration is starting for that. So it's good to see some of the outside organizations really starting to pick up their pace as well. Secondly, I attended the Bosse's annual meeting that was virtual. Had an opportunity to listen to Steve Rowland, who was their business administrator there and also a Spenceport graduate in 1983. Sorry about that, Steve, if you're listening, that I gave that out. But anyways, no, 1985, sorry, I was wrong, I was 84, he was 85. But anyways, he gave a great budget presentation and I feel very comfortable and confident with their budget at Bosse's. And I know there's going to be more discussion about that later tonight as well. And finally, I attended the district safety committee meeting today and also provided some up-to-date updates with reopening. Also, there was some updates from Christina Barman about outside use, outside community groups using our facilities. Our fields are good to go for baseball and soccer. The Marlins are using the pool. And also there was discussion about some swim lessons opening up in our district pool as well. So those are some really positive things that came out of that meeting this afternoon. Additionally, we're updating the safety plans, the building safety plans and also our fire safety plans for all buildings in the district, not just the school buildings, but also transportation in the administration building. And we're spending a lot of time on the safe plan as well, which is the mandated safe schools against violence and education plan that all school districts are required to have. And there's a lot of required state mandates that we have to provide updates in that plan. So we're working on that right now, coming close to closure on that. We're also updating some district information in that plan as well. Once that is all wrapped up, Nelson's going to present that. And then 30 days later, it'll be brought to the Board of Education after that. Other than that, that's it for me. Oh, quick shout out for the boys volleyball team. They won their quarterfinal sectional match two nights ago, I believe it was, or over the last night. The days are all starting to come down. But anyways, and I know their summer final is Thursday night. So good luck to our boys varsity volleyball team. They've had a great year, looking forward to them to continue their success. And another shout out to the football team. They had a great season, they had a really tough loss this weekend against Canadago, a powerhouse right now. But my hats off to Coach Dowd and more importantly, the student athletes that really came together this year during our fall season here in the early spring. And those boys just did an unbelievable job as well as the head coach and entire coaching staff. So really feeling good about the progress that program's making as well. Thank you.
That's it?
I could go on, it's more information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kincaid.
My pleasure.
I'm going to be brief, I had a chance.
I wasn't brief.
I had a chance to meet yesterday with the Cosgrove community and some community stakeholders, but I know that Dr. Kissel is going to have a lot more information on that meeting. So I will just say that I enjoyed attending the meeting and I'll let you present when the time comes.
Mr. Bracken?
Hey, good evening, everybody. Over the past two weeks, there's been two main meetings with the Monroe County School Board Association. One was a information exchange where Dan and Joanne and Dr. Malcolm actually presented on the superintendent, they did a superintendent's equity update, talking about the regional equity update or regional equity network and how it is engaging to help develop curriculum and such for our schools along the CRE curriculum. It was, it was really pretty interesting stuff and I need to write up a kind of a summary for y'all to see. So I don't take up a lot of time talking tonight, but they're doing a lot of really great work. And it's really interesting the way they're putting it together, not just from a history perspective or, you know, American studies perspective, but also how it weaves into some of the other topics and different subjects and stuff. After that was steering committee and there's a lot going on. And I think some of the highlights, and again, I'll try to put together a summary on this, but some of the highlights are that we really need to, as a district, engage with our legislators and do our part in terms of some of the lobbying and, you know, advocacy work that's going on that we really haven't been too much actively involved in, whereas some of the other districts around the county are really make that a priority and stuff. We did obviously have some good successes from that, given, you know, the, the aid runs and those kinds of things and the different support that the new legislators especially have shown and stuff. So I think we need to ensure we get those folks out for, for a visit and a chat and let them get to see some of the great stuff that goes on around our, our campus and stuff. The other thing is after ed, there's, between after ed and the Community Outreach Council of MCSBA, they put together some good talking points on what it means to be a board member. Also, what it means to develop a budget, a school budget and stuff. And it's, it's all pretty good, plain and clear language and stuff. And so I'm not sure, I haven't had a chance to touch base with them on that. But there's some information I think we could put up on our website that might be kind of useful for our community to see and stuff. So anyway, lots going on and that's about it for a report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Kate?
I don't have much to report. I do just want to say thank you again for everything that the elementary schools have done as far as getting everybody back to school and safe and happy. It's really been pretty phenomenal how smoothly that has gone. And I have like everybody in my family that drops my kids off and picks them up. It's really a village on my end and they've all been really impressed with the way that it's gone. So I just want to keep thanking them for working so hard to make that smooth and work so well for the kids. So thank you again.
Thank you, Kate.
Hey Kevin, did Mike Maselli get in? I don't know.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Okay, so Gary, your, your video isn't showing up. So how we, Corey, how will we know if Mr. Bracken loses? Okay. So we got to keep, keep track of whether we're all in attendance. Mr. Maselli, any reports?
No, no, thank you. My apologies for my targets.
Well, thank you for coming. So good thing you didn't have to go to Ganon to drop off a phone.
Yes, very fortunate.
Family first. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. It's now time for superintendent's report.
So we're adding a new item agenda because we've had some discussions at cabinet level about the number of students that will be attending urban suburban. So there's just a little tweak because of the uniqueness of the year. And Ty, if you wouldn't mind just sort of explaining what that little tweak is.
Sure, yep, so thank you, Dr. Kissel. So as you know, when we adopted the urban suburban program six years ago, Mr. Prom provided a presentation where it would be an average of six students per grade level. Currently, we have students in grades one through 11. So if you were to look at that in terms of the numbers, it would be a maximum number of 66 students. In fact, this year have an enrollment of 58 students. And that's really largely attributed to just attrition. So for example, one family moved into Spenceport, they're no longer a part of the program. Another family moved to West Ronaque, another family moved out of state. So just to give you some example of what we do. So when that occurs, the following school year, we try to replace them. So if the child is in first grade, that leaves an opening the following year to second grade. The issue is program only goes up until ninth grade. You cannot accept students after ninth grade. So two of the students happen to be 10th grade and 11th grade, so we can't replace those individuals. So I shared with the board earlier just our projections. We had 12 students that were looking to review their applications at the beginning of May. That ranges from May 6th to May 14th. But then we found out last week, there's a new process affiliated with urban suburban on sibling review. They implemented this last year, it did not impact us because we did not have any siblings that applied. However, this year, we have six siblings that have applied. So we received those names of the siblings last Thursday. So I presented it to cabinet yesterday, then I was asked to email Mr. Hot, Mr. Kincaid, just for some feedback and direction. That's why we're presenting it here, so I do apologize about the timing of it. So essentially what we're asking for is to accept those six siblings on top of those other 12 students that were projected. When I say 12 students, it will actually be reduced to 10 because two of the siblings happen to be grade levels where we have a vacancy. So we were projected to have 72 students for the 21, 22 school year. With this now, it will be up to 74, potentially up to 74. This is based on when we go through the review process, knowing that all the other students would accept and even if the siblings would accept. So it has a potential go up to 74 and that deviates slightly from what we've done in the past and just wanted to present it to the Board of Education for your consideration.
So it could potentially go to 74, but it could be less than that as well.
Correct.
Is the, is the new process, new process, is that the vetting process is similar?
Correct.
For the siblings?
Yes.
I guess I just haven't been in touch with it lately, so I don't know.
Yep, so same, so we received their records. The timeline is just two weeks ahead before the normal, because what would happen if, as Spenceport says, you know what, this student we will not accept, then another school district. We had first shot at this student just because it's a sibling, trying to make it easier for families. There's some urban suburban families that have children in three different school districts ranging from Brockport to HFL. You just imagine the challenges that they have, so.
Yeah. So do we need to make a motion to acceptance?
I'm fine with it.
No, it, it's basically a thumbs up that, that we agree with the, the two additional people. And I, I, I want to mention my support and I'm kind of excited about it because I've talked to some of the urban suburban parents and the difficulties having their kids in different districts. So it's great that we're able to do that and I'm glad that we're, we're supportive of that and we, we have the ability. So I did ask the question and a question that has come up is, will any additional students cause us to require an additional teacher? And the projection for these additional students that know, based on the projections that we have, it will not cause a new section, it will not cause an additional teacher. So it will be an additional student in, in a class. So it shouldn't have any impact to our current students. So it sounds like we already got a thumbs up from Gary, from Kate. Thumbs up, so. Thank you, Ty.
Thank you.
Dr. Kissel?
So I think Tim and Danielle are here to share with you actually a PowerPoint that was shared with the committee that met yesterday. Actually, the New York State Department of Health issued new guidelines. If you followed this whole story, this roller coaster for us, on April 9th, the Friday before we planned to return kids on April 12th. So in the, the guidelines that came out, barriers were not recommended. So that's where we had to take a step back and, and wait and see what other recommendations might be forthcoming. And so in looking at the guidelines and in discussions with our attorney and with Dr. Mendoza, we have new interpretation of what a cohort means. Also in those guidelines, it says that we need to convene a multi-stakeholder group to have input on the decisions we make about returning to school. So we did convene a committee, I don't even know what to call it. It's not really a committee, it's a group of people that represent different stakeholder groups. The building team and the IL team, the instructional leadership team at the middle school. Also Lori attended, other parents attended, two students were in attendance. So we wanted to represent all stakeholder groups. Tim and Danielle helped present. Obviously, we take the advice of Danielle along the way about all these varying decisions that we're making about the possibility of returning. But it was really the new interpretation of cohorting that led to these quick steps. And I'll add one more thing before they present, and I think Greg alluded to it, is that I just want the community to know that we have been working really since February 8th to try to bring every kid back. And there's been always some things that have posed challenges. But this has been a dedication of all of the people who work here. So when you mentioned transportation, you mentioned food service, facilities. They have been working diligently to be on deck whenever we can get the clearance we need, the support from the medical community, legal advice to say, let's go. And I think that's what puts us in a particularly good position right now to move this fast, to honor the guidelines, at the same time honor our community and you as representatives of the community say, well, here we go, here's, here's what the new advice has been saying to us. And with no further ado, I'll let them present some of this information that was shared yesterday with our multi-stakeholder group.
Great, thank you, Dr. Kissel, good evening everyone. So as Dr. Kissel mentioned, his new information about how we're able to interpret cohorts, right? And with the understanding that our middle school already has teams in place, and then we can interpret them as cohorts. We wanted to just provide some, some review information and also talk about how we'll use the cohorts moving forward. As we discussed, that even if we're using this cohort model, as well as students back at grade 6 to 8, 4 days a week, we still need to make sure that our mitigation strategies are in place. These come from the CDC guidance that was updated by New York State on April 9th, where the universal correct use of masks needs to be, continues to be paramount for us. That physical distancing needs to be maintained. Now that we're able to cohort in middle school, there would be a three-foot social distance between students. However, it would still be six feet in band and music. Does that, and teachers should maintain six feet to the greatest extent possible as well. Our hand washing, respiratory, teachers would remain in place along with our cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities. And we've kind of talked about this in the past. One of the silver linings that's come out of this pandemic is the relationship that we've formed with the local health department. So we would continue to work with them through any contact tracing efforts to ensure that we're meeting quarantine and isolation timelines and deadlines as well. So that said, what do we need to prioritize here? Again, to just to reinforce the universal correct use of masking, that the physical distancing should be maintained. And now that can be reduced to three feet now that we're using teams in the middle school as cohorts. And that, an additional piece we're putting in is assigned classroom seating with seating charts, including the lunchrooms, in case we ever needed to go through a in-depth contact tracing procedure. We'd be able to have those names and information to contact the appropriate individual. So moving in this direction, right, the guidance says that we need to continue to offer a remote learning option. So just wanted to highlight that that will be in place as well. And we've looked at those CDC tables, table number two, that, that shows the, the red, the orange, the different levels of community transition, despite the level of community transmission, we'll still need to offer the remote option. So we're able to continue with offering families of students or vulnerable populations that have food to learn in a virtual setting. And again, schools are encouraged to cohort and pod students to help facilitate testing and contact tracing and then to minimize the transition, transmission across cohorts. And the way that the middle school schedule works right now, they're able to prevent that transition across cohorts just through their scheduling.
Can I interrupt?
Absolutely.
There are specials that, I call them specials. Yeah, sometimes these are commingling, but they will be six feet apart. So anytime the students are not in their team, in their commingled, then they will be six feet apart.
Thank you for clarifying that. On the last board here again to sympathize is that individuals who are at high risk will be provided a virtual learning option.
You can?
Yes, sir.
Well, we had a quick Q and A, lunches will still be six feet?
It would be, yeah, lunches would still be six feet. Good question. We wanted to bring this to your attention, I thought that was helpful when we were here last time, to talk about what are our current levels of community transmission. And so Danielle, yeah?
Yeah, so Monroe County updated their dashboard in the last week to reflect kind of the information that we provided you at our last meeting. Now they have, you know, kind of the numbers and where they come from all listed here on the front page of the, or I'm sorry, Monroe County dashboard. So if families or anyone want to go and look at it, it's readily available to everyone. You don't have to sift through that, those CDC guidelines anymore. I know that this was, this created a lot of questions last time, so I just wanted to, you know, kind of touch base. We're still in this, this area here of 175 to 208 cases per 100,000 population. You can see kind of where we sit as a county, we're all still pretty high. But that being said, we, you know, we know that we haven't transmitted any COVID in school and that's, you know, the reason why we would like to move forward with getting our middle schoolers back.
Can I ask a question real quick? Sorry, so is, is Dr. Mendoza giving any kind of indications on what they think is the cause of our numbers being so exceedingly high right now? Because if you look around, not just our state, but other states too, you're, we're not seeing that. So is there something going on that they're aware of?
Socialization outside of schools.
Okay, so around the state, I guess the question I would have is what are, and I know we try not to do this, we're, we're going to do things like other people, but what are other districts doing, given that that is the case versus, you know, that, that there is an issue in the school setting and stuff? Are we seeing, you know, Pam, through your superintendent's network, through whatever other networks, are we seeing other districts saying, gosh darn it, you know, we're, we're good at school? And, and I don't want to feed into that too much, but are we seeing other districts kind of making a move to say, well, we're going to do the best we can and, and move forward? Or is everybody kind of staying within Department of Health guidelines, state ed guidelines, et cetera?
I think every school district will adhere to the guidelines with advice from their legal counsel and from medical counsel. So because you can't put everybody in the school district at risk to, to use the word go rogue, you know, to just go and do it because you decide you think that's the right thing to do when medical advice is otherwise. What makes me particular confident right now is that I spoke personally with Dr. Mendoza on Friday. And we talked about teams and, and what we would do here. And he said, I can support this. So I feel we're not going rogue. And he shared, he shared exactly what Churchill, Chiala and Spenceport are the two districts right now that plan to return with your support tonight. Return students in middle school. Churchill is also four days a week for middle school.
Are they, is, is Dr. Mendoza in consultation with like New York State Department of Health or New York State Ed, trying to figure out a way to get, you know, the nine through 12 kids back in for the end of the school year? I, I mean, I heard, I heard an interview of his late last week where he was kind of, I don't want to say he was waving the white flag, but he was saying there's not likely that we would have that happen. Are you hearing similar?
Yes, that, back to the commingling, you know, to the degree that students are exposed to similar students. And like cohorting, you know, now they've interpreted to mean a larger number. When Patti made us think about individual classrooms at the elementary school, you know, a student is in with a teacher most of the day. Now that he's interpreted our broadening, but even with this more broad interpretation that he will support, and he also consults legal authorities before he advises us, secondary students are just the way the schedules are and all their electives and their movement around the building and they're in different places with different students all the time and they're together more than 15 minutes in less than six feet. I think the only avenue that we have right now that we know of for high school, meaning in our case, nine to 12, is if the transmission rate were to go below 100 to 100,000. And that is what he's telling everybody else.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
I think just to build on that conversation, right, we look to the guidance to see how they define a cohort. And that, that guidance and that, that answer has changed with, with calls from the local health department and legal. But it is defined in the April 9th guidance, right, as a reasonable size limit set forth by the responsible parties. And that the responsible party should enact measures to prevent that intermittently, that Dr. Kissel was just discussing. The faculty may instruct more than one cohort, as long as they're maintaining that appropriate physical distance. And then going back to the chart, at some levels of community transmission cohorting is recommended if school is using less than six feet of physical distancing. So because we're in that high transmission zone, we want to reduce below six feet of physical distance, we'd have to use cohorting. In the TEEMI model in Cosgrove. And the teaming model in Cosgrove now aligns to that.
This is what I was talking about, why we convened the group of individuals yesterday evening, or late afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, so again, right from the guidance, it's saying if there's going to be a decision made to reduce less than six feet, responsible parties should give feedback from stakeholders as well. So I think, just like you heard, so our plan is to reopen as of Monday for days of in-person instruction. I think it also helps us set the stage for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, when our plan is to return to five days of in-person instruction beginning on Wednesday, September eighth. And obviously, you know, we wanted to present this to the Board of Education tonight, then work with the Transportation, Food Service and Facilities to ensure that everything's set on their end before we communicate it with our stakeholders. And obviously, we have some work to do just in terms of logistics with arrival dismissal, testing the three-eight math assessment is scheduled for next week, and we had a plan that we would have to deviate from and change the date of when we would assess all the interested six-eight students. And then obviously, work with our families and supporting them in certain circumstances.
I just want to say thank you to everyone, and the teachers, to the administrators, to our leaders, and even to the community, because I don't think there's anyone out there that doesn't want their kids back in school. This is just, this is the great next step for two-thirds of our kids to be back there four days a week, which is a great, this is a great thing.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead. Go ahead, Gary.
Oh.
No, I was gonna echo the same comments. The the work that's been put into this, the collaborative effort involving all stakeholders and putting together a concrete plan is 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 great. It's fantastic. You have my full support.
I agree. I really enjoyed being a part of that group that you assembled. I asked a number of questions there, and I was impressed that somebody on that call had an answer to every single item that I thought could possibly, you know, we could possibly trip over. I'm very excited for our middle school students to get back in the building.
You know, Lori, one of the things you said is, is there anything that could impede this? Yeah.
And I know. I have that phobia that we're going to say, let's go back, and then.
Yes, and I I totally share, you know, the disappointment that has happened before, and it is heartbreaking, and it's been hard to be a part of, honestly, because we hate to see it, but I, I think this is it.
It's exciting.
So I'm going to be a little bit more of a pessimist. I I do appreciate everything that's going on. Yet, we don't know what what can be thrown at us at the last minute. I I cheer everyone on, and I want this to happen. Yet, we are still often under the thumb of other agencies, other requirements, but but wow. I I see the level of effort that that the district went into in the time that that's gone in, in in the planning, and to be able to go from Friday's interpretation to next Monday starting, that that says a lot for for the planning that has occurred. And as you've been saying, is we want to be able to pull the trigger whenever we can. We can. That's awesome. I appreciate it. I'm one hundred percent in support of this.
You know, it's, you look at the planning piece of all this, like you said, Pam, this has been going on for months. And the plans have changed, you know, as we go along, based on updated guidelines and creative thinking and strategic thinking and getting all stakeholders involved. And that is, that is just critical moving forward, that we've looked at so many options, and now we have something that we know is within the guidelines, and it's going to allow all kids to come back. And then you look at the piece on what the benefits have been for our elementary students these last couple of weeks, the benefits that we're seeing on a daily basis, and now knowing that the middle schoolers aren't going to experience the same thing is so meaningful. And again, you know, let's just hope we can just put this into action on Monday. Yes, there is that sense of hopefully, nothing comes down like what happened before. But I I think we're in a good position. I think we're in an outstanding position for this to come to fruition.
I do too.
Dr. Kissel, don't, don't answer the phone for five days.
Monday has to happen, right?
So I could make a motion, just pull up the reopening plan. Second.
Do you need a formal vote?
No, we don't.
Over down.
Thumbs up, but thank you.
There you go.
Kate? Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Danielle.
Thanks, Paul.
Now, some of these other pieces, Marcy and I are tag teaming here, because she's been down this road many times. So she knows the date for the organizational meeting.
We're proposing July thirteenth to stay away from the July fourth holiday. So the resolution is included. If you're supportive of that date for the organizational meeting?
Do we need to read the resolution or just agree to the resolution?
I believe you just need to agree to July thirteenth.
Okay, so the resolution is supposed for July thirteenth for our organizational meeting, which meets the state's guidelines, which is within fifteen days of the opening year, which is July first. So.
Motion to accept.
Oh, motion. So, motion Gary, second Greg, all in favor? Seven oh. Awesome.
Next part is the Voces Two election of candidates. So you have profiles of each candidate.
Right, everyone was provided with a bio for each of the candidates for the five school districts that are up for reelection this year.
Okay, so so on this one, there is basically that there there's no a multiple vote, so basically it's a single person running, but we do have to pick a vote for each.
Yes.
So.
We need a motion, and then we can vote.
So I I need a a motion for John Abbott of Hilton Central School.
Just one. Motion.
A motion for all. I'd like to make a motion for to elect all candidates to the Voces Two Board of Education.
Second.
Okay, second, Mr. Bracken, all in favor, seven oh. So even though it does.
Yeah, so I'll support all of, all of them.
Yes.
Then we could just go down the board.
Yeah.
Next item is related to Voces Two is a motion regarding their administrative budget.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year for Voces Two.
First, Mr. Kincaid. Second, Mr. Gordo. All in favor? Seven oh.
The next item is to determine the order for placement of board members on the ballot. And we have five candidates, one for two positions.
I have the five names in the hat, the Ben, the Cypher, the Paul, and Reed.
Okay, so.
This will be the order, starting with number one on the ballot.
Per board policy is the order in which the candidates show up on the ballot are selected by random. Number one being? Number two?
I'm sorry. Randy Weaver.
Randy Weaver.
Number three?
Sandro Belpano.
Four.
No, I'm ready.
Oh.
Michael Mayer.
Kevin, can you read those so we can hear them, please?
Okay, well, let's, Marcy.
Okay, the order is number one, Kevin Hutton. Number two, Randall Weaver. Number three, Sandro Belpano. Number four, Michael Mayer, and number five, Leah Brown.
Next is a discussion regarding the process and agenda for the annual budget hearing and meet the candidates forum. So in discussion prior to this, you've done different things over different years. Last year was different because of COVID, so there there, there was a listing of information about candidates, I believe, on the website.
Videos.
Videos. We thought, because COVID is still an issue in the, in the number of people in a room, but maybe look at somewhat of a compromise, if you will, between only a video on the website and back in the day when people were actually present and in person being questioned in front of a board. We wanted you to consider having the candidates do a video, but then share it on the May fourth meeting so that the public who wants to zoom in on our meetings could also see more information about the candidates.
So I'm going to abstain from this conversation. So Greg, can you?
Yeah, so what we have done in the past, what Pam had alluded to, is before COVID and back when I ran, all candidates did attend and were asked questions through a rotation process, as we all know. Last year, as Pam had said, we did the full video. This year, we have to come up with a process as to make that compromise as to how we make that work. If you think about what we did last year, it was a video with a set of questions. It would be, in in my opinion, if we could pull this off, I, as I think about if we did a video presentation like that, it would be, I would like to see the community have the opportunity to possibly submit questions so that they had some kind of engagement in the process. Could that be an option? So I'm gonna.
How you pick the questions then?
What's that?
How you pick the questions, so you get fifty questions.
Right, so if you get questions, we could pick, let's say, four or five questions out of those. If community members submit questions, there's no guarantee that their question would be asked, and that would be, that would be something that we could put out there.
Who picks the questions, us or cabinet or?
Well, I would, that's a great question. Who would pick the questions? You know, we could have those possibly sent into Lynette. And then maybe she could take the questions and categorize them, and maybe we choose four or five questions.
The other issue I want to consider, not to interrupt Greg, is the amount of time. We have five candidates.
Right.
So we were thinking originally, maybe up to seven minutes per candidate. And if they want to introduce, give a little bio, and then answer questions.
Yeah.
It might be two questions if they're thorough.
Right. So we would want to do this, obviously, May fourth, correct?
That's when we have the board forum.
Right.
So you're, so so I understand, right, you're you're suggesting a similar format to what we did in the past where everybody was in person, and we film it.
Not necessarily. It doesn't have to be where everyone's in person, but we could film separately, like we did last year.
Ahead of time.
Ahead of time.
I think he's just envisioning a a portion of the process being that we allow community members to somehow communicate with Lynette as to what they would like to see asked of the candidates.
Is there? Hmm, okay, I'm not sure. Is there? We're doing in-person voting. I know there is an option to do mail-in. Is there a reason not to just have them sit on a panel like we did before, which is a little bit more? What's the word I'm looking for? I mean, it's it's a little less practice, perhaps. I I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, trying to get my head around what is the best option.
You're saying, Gary, there would be six, five candidates socially distanced sitting, say, in this room here, and there would be a speaker being Mercy, and she could ask questions of the candidates, and obviously, the whole group would be recorded and posted for the community, for the community field.
Correct.
And do it all together, that way we can kind of see the dynamic.
Yeah, kind of.
I'm just trying to fill in the blanks.
Yeah, thank you. That that is, that is kind of where I was going, and we could even do it someplace bigger if we had to move the board meeting to, you know, the west cafeteria in the, in the in the high school and stuff. So, yeah, that's kind of where I was going, Mike. Thanks.
Marcy just brought up that there may be a technology issue with, with that.
What, what?
Doing it at a different location.
The west cafeteria doesn't have technology in order to zoom the meeting like we are.
Okay, but I mean, there's other places. We could do it in the PAC. We could do it in one of the elementary school PACs that do have the technology and stuff. And so, I mean, the technology thing is overcome. We can overcome that. I just, I'm just trying to get to what is might give us the best picture. If we're going to do a candidate forum, what's it look like in the best, in the best way?
To piggyback, you know, kind of following your train of thought here, our parent forum, in turn of K five. Here I zoomed in. We did a presentation with them. People could ask questions. Now, you have to kind of, again, your timing is an issue. You don't want this to go on for two hours, but it could be such a way that people could have their questions come in via Zoom.
Record it.
And it would be recorded. I'm not, I'm just throwing out ideas because you're brainstorming too.
I mean, the way that Gary described has been done historically. That was kind of Gary, Kate. A couple of people like that said processes similar to that. The thing to be do, do is but this is a nice way. Everyone's time is valuable, their schedules are busy. Historically speaking, there has been many candidates have insufficient time to come and participate. They've chosen not to. But if the candidates as a whole, outside the incumbents, choose not to participate, then we should probably shift in what we're going to do.
You don't know if they're actually coming unless, until they don't show up. Right, or was it, did I have to ask Mercy to ask them?
Oh, okay.
To confirm, confirm that they're available.
I think we have four here we can ask. This is, I I will be available at that board meeting. Mike, Sandro, so all who is not here is Randy. So I think we have four out of the five participants with us today.
So at this, so at this point, it looks like that doing it here is what I'm hearing, doing it here, record it, and also people can watch it live, correct? And have each candidate go one at a time or in the same setup where the question is answered down the line?
Round and round the line. And where the questions come from again, community or?
Well, we haven't made a decision on that yet.
I'm trying to stay out of that.
So I think if we were able to have questions come in by chat that could fill out some of the, I wouldn't be opposed to having some precept questions, humble, they ask each candidate. But I really do like the idea of allowing the community to chat some questions, even if we can't get to all of them. I just think it gives the community a chance to raise issues that are important to them.
So would it be easier to have them submit questions before that evening? So that's one less thing that we have to manage that evening because of time constraints. So going back to what Pam had said in regards to time constraints, because I would guess that we would give each candidate a certain amount of time. would give each candidate a certain amount of time to have a platform statement, introduce themselves, and things along that line, and then give each candidate one, you know, a couple of questions. If we had those questions in advance, then managing that chat might be a little challenging, or it's another layer that might extend the process because we could have up to five people.
I also think it would be important for fairness to candidates that whatever question was asked, that each candidate had the opportunity to answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we've done in the past. If a question is asked, each candidate answers it, and then we move on to the next question. But we do, we have in the past limited the time for this entire process, you know, something reasonable. Now, with five candidates, maybe that's 45 minutes to an hour or something like that, but it's not something that goes on for, you know, two, three hours.
And Gary, if you remember with that process, is that when a question was asked, and Mercy, you were probably part of this process, and I know Lynette was as well, if you need to chime in, please do. So the first candidate answered the first question, and then the second candidate did it, the third, the fourth, and then with the next question, the second candidate answered it first. So that rotation was part of the process. Do you remember that, Gary?
Yep, yep, absolutely, yep.
So that each candidate, yeah, each candidate had the opportunity to answer one of the questions first.
Gotcha.
So we would need four to five.
Basically limited to four to five questions, right?
We know, we know, we're going to have, we need at least four. Definitely, we have to prep for five, five questions. And then that process of rotating, so each candidate has the opportunity to answer that question, one question first, and then just you rotate that around.
So did you agree that the idea of having the questions come in beforehand, not taking them that evening?
Yes.
Then, and then the other question I would have is, do you want the candidates to know if those questions are ahead of time?
No.
No, no, we didn't. I know that when I had that and Gary's conferring as well, we had no idea what the questions would be.
No.
We had to be prepared and ready to answer a question without any, and I think last year, you guys, when you did it virtually, you guys didn't have an opportunity to look at questions in advance either. So.
So in person, five candidates, five questions up to a certain time limit?
Correct.
And videotape them?
Yes.
Yes.
And what's the time limit you want?
I, I know that, and Gary, chime in, yeah.
Kate's gonna laugh at me.
I forget the time, but I know that I went through this process. There was, we were given only thirty seconds.
Like two minutes.
For a minute.
Yeah, minute to two minutes.
Yeah, they had little signs.
By really quick. But we were given a certain amount of time and given a little bit of a warning when we got close to our time. It was like a, a green card was held up or a yellow card or something along those lines.
Yeah, and some bad candidate had his phone go off while another candidate was trying to answer. Sorry, Kate.
It wasn't me.
All's well that ends well, Mr. Racket.
Do we have clarity?
I believe so. Just a reminder that it is also the code of conduct prior to that, the bond presentation, then the candidates, and then the board meetings.
Yeah, I, we, we really can't have it be a really long drawn out process and stuff. And again, I get that, that maybe, maybe this year, there's more attention to it. In the past, I mean, we've had so very little attention to the candidates forums. It, you know, you, you want to, you want to have that opportunity. You want to give people that opportunity. But we also have, you know, other business to attend to and, and stuff, and not have it drag out into the, into the night and stuff. So I just, I would ask that we keep this, we may have to change the start time for the, the actual board meeting a little bit, but not, I, I wouldn't want it to go too long.
Right now, the board meeting is officially scheduled to start at eight. That's what's in our calendar.
Wait, what time, what, wait, so what time are we starting, like the code of conduct and all those other things? Are we starting at six, like we've been doing these?
Six.
Six o'clock.
Okay. And so we have code of conduct, which takes about 10 minutes. And then what else? I forget.
Budget.
The budget, which generally, at that point in time, we're at 30-ish minutes?
They work, Rick?
Plenty of time.
I'm not, I'm not trying to shortcut it. I'm just trying to.
No, I see.
Put parameters around it and stuff. So I mean, we could say 6:45, we start candidate forum. And 7:45, we start board meeting? I don't know. Or 7:30, we start board meeting?
We could probably, if we, if we start the code of conduct and the budget at six, and figure for 45 minutes for that, even though that might end sooner. If we have our candidates here by 6:30, then we can quickly transition right into the meet the candidates night. And if we start before 6:45, great. If we don't, you know, we just move it right along and do a thorough job with that process. And then, and if we're done shortly after 7:00, 7:15, 7:20, we can start the board meeting.
I think we can advertise, I think we can advertise it as such that the board meeting will start as early as, you know, and we can do the same thing with the candidates night. The candidates night will start as early as, you know, 6:30. The board meeting will start as early as 7:15 to 7:30. So that when we're ready to move on to the next phase, we move on. And people have been given notice that they want to be online to listen. They can be online to listen and wait until it starts if we're not there.
Can we advertise it as, as early as? Okay.
It's gonna be taped and then downloaded to people can watch it at some other time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yep.
So I, I just sent a text to Randy. If, I, I see Randy is, is logged onto our meeting. If you just got a, a text and you don't remember my phone number, I just sent you a, a text to see if you were available at 6:30. Other candidates, 6:30 on May 4?
Yeah, it's coming from today.
That, one. And Randy responded, yes, thank you, Randy. So it sounds like there's gonna be five candidates here.
We're good? All right.
Can I start talking again now? Thank you, everyone.
Jonathan needs to join us to talk about policy 6180 and staff student relations?
No, the thousand policy review first.
First.
Sorry.
It's the same speaker though.
Yeah.
Same PowerPoint.
So, thank you, Dr. Kissel. Thank you, everyone, for having me again. Thank you. So the 1,000 series, I just put a part two, but the first two policies were, as I mentioned, the last board meeting, two policies that were spent support specifics policies. Relationships for the board administration, employees and parents. We did have one comment on that from Ms. Stone regarding applying the policy to parents and community members. I did add those words in there. So essentially, it is, if it, it was, it said that if an employee brought up a complaint, that there would essentially be no retaliation against that individual. And in this case, we, I added the words parent and community members so that there would be no adverse action taken against a parent or community member who brought up a complaint that made its, potentially made its way all the way up to the board. Whether we retain that in that fashion is up to the board. I can't bring the language up right in front of me. But you still have the, the question as to whether you want to retain the policy at all. That's making that change. Similar with principles, but no, I, I guess I'll freeze on that one. Odd questions.
So I, I know we've talked about it many times. It, it's still going to go through review of Erie's. So they haven't done that step yet. We're doing the pre-step, and they're going to look through just to, to make sure that there's no contradictions in it, correct?
Yes. And from my conversations with them, that they did essentially pass this one in 1999 as well, when they assisted with the prior manual.
Okay. So I, I agree that we should be, continue to keep it. I, I think it's a great statement of what the, the relationships ought to be between all parties in the school district. So it sounds like it's a keeper.
Okay. Principles for school board members, a couple comments on this one. They do really seem like rules or potential, just rules for conduct. And that was, I reached out to everyone, and that was their perspective, that they would not normally put this in a policy because it is being civil to other people during the board meeting. I don't know what the history was. We couldn't find an old policy manual that had history in it. I was able to find that Brockport has a similar policy, and they do record their history in their policy. So they passed, they first passed their principles policy in 1970. So I don't know how old this one is, but the principles are, I don't say drastically different between the two, but there are differences between them. So if you want to retain this one, if we, if you want me to work on some additional principles that could be incorporated in there, that question I would present to you. How do you, how you want to proceed with this one? Yes?
Jonathan, just to be forward, I don't have any problem with accountability. You know, bullet A in the policy is a function of state law and legal precedents, things like that, where there is consequences if you break those rules associated with being on board. You could be removed. The rest of those things, there's no real tool in there, or real methodology that if you, if you live outside one of those rules there, that you could be removed. So really, there's no teeth to the rest of it. So I understand it's, you know, there are good rules to live by, but there's no, there's no end game to it. Secondarily, a lot of those things in sections B through G, those could be interpreted a lot of different ways. It'd be spied a lot of different ways. So I'd be wary of some of those things because so you just have a basic disagreement on a policy could literally end up falling under one of those categories. So I would like to know what Monroe County School Boards Association thinks about this and what else is out there, as well as where some of our other partner districts are doing about things similar to this.
I can reach out to find a contact at Monroe County School Boards to see what they say about it. And I have looked at the district on the west side, and the only one I thought was Brockport, but I will look for others to see if other districts have principal-related policies.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's kind of interesting because some of those things are very broad
So, so one.
That we would force them. Besides that.
So, trying to get my video on here. So one thing that MCSBA does, they don't, I think a lot of the districts have had different, kind of rules of engagement or just kind of general principles of how they're going to behave and stuff that everybody signs every year. And, you know, I know we talked about this, I don't know, two, three years ago, about having some, you know, every year, we kind of come together during the organizational meeting and, and have that conversation of, hey, this is how we're all going to act. You know, we're going to assume noble intent. We're going to have, you know, good conversations and those kind of things. And those, a lot of, a lot of the districts in Monroe County have this, I guess, for lack of a better term, code of conduct that they sign every year. So I, I mean, it doesn't have to be a policy, but it's something else. It's a different way to engage in a practice that says, hey, every year, we want to reaffirm as a board, we want to work as a cooperative body to do things, you know, you know, that are best for the district and stuff. So I think maybe versus a policy, we kind of need to move ourselves towards something like that.
And correct, correct me if I'm wrong too, but we, we have to take some pretty rigorous training when we join the board as well, as to what a board member is, you know, is required to do, is allowed to do, all those kinds of things. So I don't know if that's something that kind of supersedes a policy because, you know, as we all know, policies can get difficult because then we are abided by them. But am I remembering that correctly, anybody? I remember taking a pretty.
We have to take, we have to take certain classes. I think there's three of them to take when we come on the board.
Right.
There has been a numerous discussion in the past about a Board of Education Code of Conduct. And then this is the part that got gray. Throw this out to Ty and Jonathan. Is the Board of Education subject to the school code of conduct, just like an employee? I think the answer was yes.
As a, essentially, you're either a visitor, whether you're an employee, it doesn't matter. It applies to everyone who's on school.
So we're, we're already subject to the code of conduct as it's out there now?
Yes.
So I, I guess I agree with Lori's comment that, that this should be more of a, a, a statement that's in the board member handbook.
Yeah.
The information as whoever's the next new board member or board members.
Or I'm also okay with Gary's idea. We were to put it in more of a, an agreement that we each sign each year. It just doesn't strike.
I like that too. So it's not just when you first come on board.
Right. It kind of reaffirms it every year that, hey, we're here to do the things that are best for the kids, do the best for the district. We're not here for personal agendas and things like that, and, and how we're going to act with each other. So I, I, I've, I've liked what I've seen from some of the other districts around the county. And, and we certainly can, I can certainly get some examples that we could easily tailor to our own so that we don't, you know, we have this principle for school board members, like Mike said, what's it got to it? So, yeah. We probably could drop that, that policy out of our book.
Side A. So. Which I don't think we even need to, because when we say our oath.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're saying that we're going to observe that the laws of the state of New York.
Correct.
So Gary, thank you for volunteering for putting that together.
Yeah, no problem. I, I, no, I, you know what? I think I actually started one a few years ago. So I will pull it back out, dust it off, and get some examples from others, and I'll, I'll put that together in time for our July meeting.
Great, thank you.
Right on that.
So if you go down that road, we, the board would just need to act to actually rescind the policy. I'm not asking for you to do that either way, but ultimately, either that's done once you've signed the agreements, if, if you want to go that route, or when we pass the new policy next June, we would essentially rescind all policies that were not kept into that, into that manual.
I would say let it sit until the final, a, a, and as we go through, we may, in case we find references to this somewhere else that by getting rid of it sooner may cause other issues.
Right.
Okay. Excellent.
Again, sticking with the role of the board, the power and duties of the board and nomination of election board officers, no questions or comments on those appointments and designations by the board. There was a comment on this one, I think, Mr. Hood, it was your question about assistant treasurer and assistant clerk. The assistant clerk is appointed in case the district clerk is not available to perform her duties. It is not a stipend position. It is, the individual will be compensated only on a fill-in basis.
On what basis?
For whatever time they work.
Okay.
And that's only in case the district clerk is not available.
Okay. And today, we haven't had that. So this would be someone that we appoint during the organizational meeting?
She is appointed.
She is appointed.
So, so we have had it in the past? This wasn't in the board policy?
We don't, it wasn't in, it wasn't in that, the title was not in that policy.
Okay.
Right.
And the assistant treasurer, your other question, we have had that in the past. I believe Mr. Wood is appointed as the assistant treasurer, and that's an internal control. Right now, the system that's set up is the treasurer handles the, the flow of money and then. the flow of money and then Mr. Wood actually reconciled the bank accounts at the end of each month.
If you're looking to put a stipend to it, I'm.
Otherwise, there were no other comments on that one. And then the first two, District Clerk, District Treasurer, no questions. The main question with the tax collector policy, the district does utilize the services of the town and the county to collect taxes. We have not had a chance to reach out to the town and see if there's, to see when the last municipal cooperative municipal agreement was put in place. So we are going to do that to determine if we have to renew that municipal agreement. But right now, they handle the collection of taxes. So there was a whole section of that, a good portion of the policy that came from Erie one that I deleted because we followed that method, methodology. Then finally, appointment and duties of the claims auditor. Another comment on this one about making, ensuring any changes for the employment of a spouse of a current employee, a current employee. So what I did was I just added a line that says, unless approved by the board. Because the individual is already appointed, so arguably you've already acted to make that decision that you would accept that individual. And we do have a code of ethics in place where, which everyone would have to follow in that case. So she would have to disclose any interest, any conflict of interest in that, in that capacity.
And then the Lord's comment about the, the final statement that, that that's just a statement that we're responsible.
Okay. We're responsible to ensure that the claims are audited.
Yeah, so the board remains ultimately responsible for the auditing of all claims.
Okay, got it.
So yes, it is, no matter who we appoint, it's still our hand going up to approve that, that item and the, the agenda is that that's where they're, I'm going to back down.
Okay.
That's also why there's more members on the occupancy.
Got it.
And Mr. Wood enlightened me this morning. Historically, it used to be the case where all of the claims came to the board and you did have to review them. Then they moved towards the internal claims auditor position.
Your CFO appreciates your duties.
So that's the one thousand series altogether before I move into the sixty, sixty-one, eighty-eight questions. I'll take those off to Erie one. And sixty-one, eighty, staff-student relations. So this is, as I indicated in news and notes, this is a personnel policy. This would have come up in, as we reviewed the personnel policy in two months as part of the six thousand series. However, we felt it was a timely policy to bring forward earlier. Plus, even if we had reviewed in the six thousand, it would not have actually been accepted until we accepted the new manual next year. So Brian bringing this forward as a first read tonight allows you the chance to get this policy in place if you, if you so choose to address what I kind of saw as a gap between a sexual harassment policy and a straight child abuse. There's, there's these behaviors that have developed over the years that fall between the gray lines when someone tries to claim it's consensual or this wasn't that. The grooming behaviors and all of those things that are in that gray area. This policy really does a nice job of addressing those behaviors and prohibiting them. From what I could find, another district passed this in two thousand and ten. So we're a little behind on this one. But we did make one change and it should have been in red line in the policy. After consultation with Jamie, we broadened the scope of the policy to cover unpaid volunteers, contractors, vendors, subcontractors, consultants, essentially any adult that comes on campus. Because you never know when one of these adults might be in a situation where they have a private moment with a child. We try and prevent that. But if there's individuals who have a badge, who are contractors, who are working with us for multiple years, this ensures that this policy applies to them as well, even if they're not an employee or a staff member. So we thought broadening this would be a benefit to the policy, essentially.
So I might add that we brought together, I don't know if I call it a committee at this point, but we've brought together a group of, of individuals from secondary, elementary counselors, principals in light of recent events to look at this policy and also to help us audit or review, what are all the practices we have in place to ensure student safety? And what are other articulations, procedures, recommended behaviors? What are all the things that we want to make sure are in place so that we can assure our parents and our families that we're doing everything we possibly can to prevent anything untoward happening to their children? So this policy did get moved up. It was vetted to that group. Jamie made the recommendation to make it more inclusive in terms of all the people that could possibly be on campus and be around children. And it's one step. And as we know, a policy alone doesn't prevent something, but it's important to have there. And so it's all these other pieces that we want to make sure are in place to be the very best and safe place we can be for our students. I, Lori, I might have interrupted you.
No, that's okay. I just had a practical question. As we expand the scope of the policy, how do we make sure that all the people who are now included in the policy know about the policy? But you know, it's one thing to have a policy, you know, on the books, but if people don't know about it, how do they know that they are expected to adhere to it? Do we have other policies that impact vendors and interns and contractors?
This language here in red is taken directly from our sexual harassment policy.
Okay.
So let's just ensure, you know, our volunteer program through Christina Bauer with Community Education, volunteer coaches, contractors working through the facilities department, making sure that this would be a policy that gets distributed.
Okay.
Did you see my email, Jonathan?
Apologies.
Oh, it's fine. So I asked you, this stuff right here, what happens for false claims? Any wording on, there's a false claim made because in some regard, staff members are sitting ducks. All one kid's got to say one thing, then it's gonzo. So do we need to have a false claim clause or any wording for that?
Would that fall under like code of conduct for
That's one, right.
students and staff that, you know, making false claims about anything, regardless whether it applies to this policy or otherwise? I, I don't know that you put it in this policy only because it kind of then begs the question, are we? And I know Dave, that's not your intent, but are we assuming that somebody, that that's going to be what happens? That we, we get false claims? I, I would just be real cautious about putting it into this policy versus putting it into perhaps a broader code of conduct statement.
You know, if there's anywhere in the code, Chaz, I don't have a hand, I know I don't remember.
Typically, they're included in sexual harassment policies, which include language regarding employees who make false claims against other employees. I've seen there, I did not see one in this policy.
Yeah, I didn't see any of that. I know students or staff members making claims.
Yes, that's my thought. I know when, when our code of conduct committee met this afternoon, Ty brought up the very question as whether we include additional information in our code of conduct regarding grooming behaviors or other, you know, statements regarding this policy if it's approved because of the very question that was asked at the beginning, does the code of conduct apply to everyone here? The answer is yes, it applies to everyone on school ground. So that could be our method of advertising it as well and making sure that our contractors comply, comply with all of the requirements in the code of conduct.
I'm not technically dead horse, but it doesn't ask my question. Well, where, where is a false claim identified in this policy or other policies? Because it can happen, it has happened and it will happen. So I mean, that's my thought. I don't have an answer right now, but that's my concern with this right here.
I, if, if it was the board's desire for me to include it, I can work on finding something that would be appropriate. I don't have a position on this at this point. I need to research it or whether.
I guess to Gary's point, if it's somewhere else, I mean, I'm okay with that. There has to be some protection for our staff or any, you know, because claims are claiming then, you know, you know what that's all about. So.
Yeah, I think where it is stated or multiple places that all employees or individuals are afforded due process rights.
Right.
And an investigation, thorough investigation and honoring due process rights. Whether it needs to be, where it needs to be is a good question, but that's, that's standard operating procedure for any misconduct or alleged misconduct.
Yeah. I guess I think more about it.
Yeah.
I mean, something could happen, you can go through due process to say.
I, I'm just, again, Dave, I, my, my concern is that it sounds, you know, it could be easily construed that we're diluting the importance of this policy by putting a caveat in there that talks about false accusations and stuff. And like, we would assume that that's going to be a prevalent thing versus this being the focus of this policy. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
I'm thinking code of conduct.
Yeah, yeah.
That's more of a code of conduct.
You meaning it should be in there or you think?
Yes, not this. I think this should be a policy, but the, the notion of
Right.
false accusations about anything.
But we don't know if it's in though.
We're not sure.
We're not sure.
But I think that's where we should look. If it's not there, then it should be there.
So I was going to recommend a approval without a second read, but it sounds like we still have a couple of questions that we want to hear about. So we'll continue to call this the first read. One note that I did put in that the system is there's a statement in here that says social networking websites. I, I think websites should be deleted and the word platform or just that word because social networking is not just websites. It's other things and I wouldn't want that to be restrictive against us. So just delete the word websites and put in platform or just delete the word websites. It says through social networking websites now is how Erie has it. So I think we need to get rid of the word website.
Okay.
Okay, that was our first read.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Now we move to Great Castle Audit. All right.
Thank you very much. So as you know, through Great Castle, we have been conducting an audit of our infrastructure. This is something a little bit different than what we've done in the past. And I'd like to introduce Brian Murphy, who's from Great Castle, who along with Mr. Allen provides an overview of the findings.
So thank you for having me here today. And, and yeah, just as a clarification, we did an assessment. We did not do an audit, okay? We walked in and the reason that's a big difference is we found things and we want to work together on them, but we know they're not, you have to fix this today before next time we come through. Okay, so this was really an assessment. Just want to walk through what we did, our methodology, then I'll get into real quick the findings that we found with Spencerport.
Can I ask one question before we go further? I would assume we're not going to bring up any vulnerabilities to, to all the people that are listening in on our meeting right now and talking generalities?
I'm going to talk very carefully in generalities. I'm not going to get into, I have a top ten, but they are just the, the generalities. If there's a concern, please stop me, okay? I want to be.
I don't know enough about it, so I'm not going to be able to use any of this data.
No, I keep this in, this will be, I will not get technical on this at all through, through this. So this is
Thank you.
A good conversation. Thank you for that clarification. Really, what we, our goal was is in terms of identifying those security risks in your information security. So think about protecting data, what we do, how we interact with the computers, all the way around through that, throughout the district, that we wanted to identify those weaknesses and risks and really from a deviated standard. We looked at the NIST eight hundred dash fifty-three framework. That is a framework of information security. It's a very large framework. We looked at about four hundred and fifty-eight controls over about a two-day period. So we went through a lot of different areas and it's really all about raising that awareness. The benefits of using risk management, basically, and I heard you guys talking tonight, you're addressing risk all the way around. We're going to talk about risk in terms of information security. So that's, it's a very common theme as we walk through all of this. And then develop that prioritized actionable plan. And that's why we come up with a top ten. We recognize we can't fix everything all at once. Let's get that right order, figure out what we're going to work on. Some of the key points, and the first one is critical, compliance. So we talked a lot about compliance and meeting the compliance and the laws. That does not equal security. We can do things and be absolutely compliant and a bad event still can happen, okay? We, we hear that in the news, even while Great Castle was meeting this, Victor was going on in the news, okay? They had gotten hit with a piece of things. So as compliance does not equal that, but we want to work towards that common goal. The things that we talk about, vulnerabilities, we identified several vulnerabilities. That does not quantify risk. The vulnerability comes with a likelihood that something could happen and then if it did that impact, okay? So we really want to be careful and we determine those probability and impact scores and consider mitigating controls. That was a big part of our conversation. We worked for two days and met and walked through all of these things. Then we spent three hours going through just the top fifteen or so items that we found. We said, are there mitigating controls? Are there things that you're doing that would lower the risk that we're talking about? We had tried to identify those. Then finally, the risk management. We want to do this and here's the goal, information security. I can set you up with a box, it's absolutely secure. I'll never plug it in, nobody gets access, it's awesome. It doesn't do anything, okay? We want to do this to the lines, to the business strategy, the goals here at Spencerport, okay? We want to enable you to do your job, not prevent you from doing your job, maximizing that value, the holistic approach. So how does Great Castle do that? How do we do some activities? Real quick, we based that assessment on seventeen domains. We reviewed documentation, we looked at a lot of policies and procedures around information security. One of the questions we started off every single session was, what kind of documentation do you have? And we looked at that. Then we identified those vulnerabilities, threats and gaps. Here are the seventeen domains. I'm not going to go through every one of them, but you can see in terms of information security, and this is a big point that we talk to a lot of people, it's not an IT issue. This is a Spencerport School District issue, this is an everybody issue. From awareness and training to access to personnel security, planning, physical protection, this is, this is a Spencerport issue. So it's not just an IT issue. We take a holistic approach. So how do we do it? We conducted interviews. I mentioned that we did it based on two different days, we worked through those seventeen domains. We identified some gaps. We provided our score sheets. So one of the different things between an audit and our assessment is we gave Cory and Paul our entire spreadsheet, all of the notes that we took for those two days. And we scored all of those controls, but again, about four hundred and fifty-eight controls on this zero to three scale. So zero is fully there, fully implemented, it's effective, consistent and it's auditable. Meaning if an auditor came in and started to say, how do you guys do things here? It would pass that audit. On down to doesn't exist, you know, we have varying degrees in the middle. So we scored every one of these that way. We reviewed it with Cory and Paul, looked at it. And again, we looked at those artifacts to say, how do they meet those controls? Couple of things that we did on that third day, again, we used the NIST eight hundred dash thirty. This is a guideline to how to do risk management. How do you do this? And again, it's all about probability and impact. We went through that score and we tried to score all of the items that we talked about in terms of a likelihood. What's the likelihood that this could happen? And we ranked that again from a one to a five. So a one. doesn't happen, or it's once every ten years. A five, we know that this event is happening. We know that, you know, that could cause us risk. Three is likely to happen. So, you know, once every, you know, maybe once a year, a couple of year, times a year type of thing. We had to grade that out. And we did the same thing for the impact. How much harm could this do to Spencerport? You have to think about that in terms of a number of characteristics. It's not just cost, but the, what are the costs? It's cost to be downtime, effort to brace back up, the inability to teach. It could result in fines. Reputational harm. Again, I go back to wasn't Victor, Honeyland Falls got mentioned earlier tonight. I believe it was about two years ago, they had an impact where they had somebody get into their grading system and records were taken. That's a reputational impact. Okay. So there's, we, we looked at these from a number of areas. Again, one being very, very little, five being very bad. Okay. I use the medical terms, one's pulling off a band-aid, five's a compound fracture. Okay. We identified and then working with those business goals and strategies. Results. Some, some things to remember, and this is one of the things I always talk about a little bit. Scoring is based on compliance with an industry framework. Okay. We do grade on zero to one hundred, but it is a very steep bell curve. A hundred is not the goal. Okay. So as we get into that risk assessment, it's all about people, process and technology. That's one of the big things we see quite often is, oh, let's just go out and get another tool. Let's grab another system to do that. A lot of what we found is actually in the processes and the people. I said nine hundred percent class compliant, and then risk management is ongoing. So this is not a once and done. This is an ongoing effort, just like you guys have been talking about most of the evening. Okay, we got gathered everything. We, we already provided a detailed finding, so I gave them the spreadsheet. We did a formal write-up report that was presented to Cory and to Paul. We were able to get and sign that off. And then we have a, a roadmap. We have a plan that we've actually went through. And one of the things I do with these is I sign it out and I say, now here's this item, who's going to be responsible to work on it? And we went through that activity to actually identify departments and individuals that are working on their top items. All right. I mentioned goes on a hundred. You guys got a fifty-five. And before everybody says that's failing grade, that is not a failing grade. Okay. Scars, well, and I'll tell you very clearly, I do this all the time. And I do this for high schools or school districts, colleges, businesses out there. What I find, most organizations, when the first time they go through this are in the low to upper thirties. Okay. You guys have a great team here and you got some good things going on. That's huge. I see fifties and sixties on the second and third time through the best organizations out there. I did a credit card organization back in December. They got in the upper eighties. Okay. And they are heavily, heavily governed, heavily under compliance. So you guys got a fifty-five. You did very, very well. You're in a good place. It tells me you're taking things seriously. But we're moving forward. How do we get you to that next step? Any other questions before I sit down and we go into executive?
Not reading this.
No, perfect.
Thank you for your patience.
Not a problem.
But it'd be tough freely, you know.
Yeah.
The next item is financial report. Rick?
Thank you, Dr. Kissel. Keep this brief on the revenue side. Things are looking better. We've had some things come in that were better than anticipated. So the amount of revenue that we're getting based on the estimate is increasing. So that's good. On the expenditure side, again, just want to reiterate that we did sort of put a spending freeze on as of March. I'm beginning to see other areas in savings. So again, we're seeing more savings. So this is good. What that indicates is that we should have a little bit more fund balance. At this point, I'm projecting about seven hundred and thirty thousand. Again, when you look at an eighty-four million dollar budget, it's still not a lot. But as we go through the year, more information comes out and we'll keep an eye on that.
So, so Rick, with regards to, to revenue being up, is it anticipated that it's a timing thing or revenues will be up for the year? Does it just happen that it came in earlier than it might have done last year?
Or is it? No, I think there's, there's some more one-time revenue. So for example, the, the homeless, item one point six. You know, that was, that's more of a, a one-time revenue. We had a couple other issues where, not issues, but scenarios where we got a one-time revenue for pilots.
And then the Utica, Utica National dividend, but that sometimes happens.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't budget for that. So again, that's going to be a little bit more. I, I think it's great that it's going above what I had estimated. It's great that we're seeing a little more savings. But again, the point of this is we have to ma-manage, are we getting more revenue than expense? That's the question. And that's where we continue, that's where we continue to analyze what's happened. Remember that we use about two million dollars in reserves to help balance that budget. So at some point we have to manage that bearing in. All right. School lunch. Again, Nicole and I continue to think about how we can better present this to you. I never really think it's an apples to apples comparison. So for example, this particular report, we didn't have the federal sources for the February period, but we did in the prior year. So when I looked, we did receive it in the interim. That was a little under ninety thousand dollars. So that instead of a, you're seeing a negative revenue over expensive two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. It's more like a hundred and seventy-eight, which is very similar to what you saw last year. I think the other important aspect of this is the revenues you're seeing, even though the report is through March thirtieth, the revenues only really report through February. The expenditures are reporting through the end of March. So you have a whole month of revenue that's not being reflected. Okay. So you're looking at apples to apples from the prior year to this year. That's okay. But these numbers are going to change once we receive the March revenues. Okay. Any questions either?
Yeah. What is one dot ten?
The CPSC administrative cost?
Uh, one dot time refund over prior years other. It's like a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. What is the other category? That's a, that's a revenue, by the way.
Yeah. So this, in this particular case, it was for the, what we call the CPSC administrative cost.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
That's fine.
So again, we have CPSC, okay. Monroe County reimburses us a certain portion of that. We're not responsible for that. Monroe County is. So, and that's a timing. That goes back to, that's a timing issue.
That's fine. Yep. I just wasn't sure what, you know, other is just pretty generic.
Yep.
Motion to accept the financial report. Mr. Gervardo, second, Mr. Cade, all in favor? Seven oh. Thank you. Thank you. Meeting evaluation.
Impact.
I, I think it was unfair that you were out on the balcony while, while we're in this, this room here, Gary.
It, it was extremely unfair, but oh, well.
Well, we appreciate you coming on, both Gary and Kate. We appreciate that you were there and we still have the ability to do that through, right now it's May twenty-fifth. After that, we'll see if the executive order extends our ability. Now, just point of, of information is New York State regulations say we can do remote. It's just pre-COVID was we'd have to identify the address of each location and it would have to be open to the public. So Gary would have to be, would have to be out on the balcony. So other people can come join the meeting if they wish. And, and Kate, your living room, well, we'll have to have you join into, to your living room. So you might have to be out on the front porch or on the deck.
Anybody wants to join me is welcome.
We're on our way. Now that means we have to move furniture too. So no, never mind. Okay. Motion for executive session.
I make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing school security issues as well as to discuss the employment history of particular persons. Second.
Kate, all in favor? Seven oh. Thank you so much. Recording is starting again. Welcome back. It is nine oh seven. So I have a motion to exit executive session.
Motion.
Should Lori, second. Dave, all in favor?
Yes.
Five, six oh. I, I can hear Gary's voice. Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting. Lori Stone, second, Greg Cade, all in favor.
Yes.
So Kate left the meeting at, this is a note from Marcy, left the meeting at eight forty-five. Thank you all.